Okay, good evening. Welcome to your October Board of Education meeting. And so we will start the meeting with a pledge of allegiance and after the pledge, we'll remain standing and we'll do a moment of silence for the Farmingdale community. All right, so everyone, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll have a moment of silence, please. Please remain standing. Okay, thank you. Our hearts are with our neighbors and friends in Farmingdale during these challenging times. Thank you. And we'll begin the meeting with our senior pianist solo performances. After the performance, we'll take a short recess to reset the stage. And at this time, let's welcome our coordinator of fine and performing arts, Dr. Hale, to make the introduction. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I won't be playing piano, but thank you. So each year, we have approximately 300 students that attend NISMU just for piano every year. So the thinking this past year was, why not take the opportunity to provide some kind of a platform for these students to perform in our schools, since they go to NISMU representing our schools, and we have so many wonderfully talented students, let's have an opportunity to feature them. So this past weekend, we did our very first honors piano recital, where we invited the 19 students in the district who received a perfect score on a Level VI NISMU solo this past spring. So these students played at the highest level, college level, professional level of music, and earned a perfect scores. This evening, we were very delighted to be able to request that two of the students that performed this past weekend, who are seniors, are finally, after all these years of practice, have the opportunity to share their talents and the result of all their hard work with our Cyosset School community. So our first performer this evening is going to be Theo Gata, and he'll be performing from Sweet Burgamesque by Claude W.C., The Movement Claire de Lune. It also bears mentioning, Theo's grandfather was a board member in this Cyosset Board of Education for 10 years. We just found out, so hopefully he's watching from home if he's not here. But that's wonderful. So our next performer this evening is going to be Ms. Emily Young, and she'll be performing George Gershwin's Piano Prelude Number Two.
Let's give them another round of applause for their incredible talent. It's no wonder that Cyosset has voted the number one district with music community. Thank you so much, and thank you for, Dr. Hale, for having them perform for the board and the community tonight. Thank you. All right, so now we're going to take a short recess to reset the stage, and then I will begin our monthly meeting. Thank you. ... district, they're just amazing. Okay, so the first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes of meeting from September 11th, 2023. May I have a motion, please? Mr. Greco, seconded by Ms. Levitin, are there any questions? Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? Dr. Rufo, may we have the treasurer's report and appropriation adjustments, please?
Okay. As shown on the treasurer's report, the cash on hand for the month-end August 2023 was $90,401,594.40. It shows that bank balances for all the cash accounts were reconciled to the book balances and were collateralized in accordance with the district's banking agreements and investment policies. Thank you.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, we are going to take things out of order a little bit tonight. Sitting in the back, we are going to go to the new business for the eight items. And the first item that we are going to do tonight is the A2, is the approval of the appointments to tenure Daniela Begonja and Michelle McGarven. Can I have a motion, please? I need to have a motion, please. All right, Mr. Greco, seconded by Ms. Falco, are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? Congratulations on earning the tenure. Your dedication to our students and community is truly appreciated. Thank you, and congratulations again. And then the next one we are doing... Oh, yes, please.
We don't haze people, but we do recognize them. And just because there are only two persons being appointed to tenure tonight doesn't mean that you get short shrift on my speech. So you're going to get the full speech all the same, which is, I heard a proverb once that goes like this, friends are the family you choose for yourself. And we don't have exactly a friend relationship, but by appointing you to tenure, we say that you are part of this family permanently. And you've worked hard to earn the right to be part of this family, and it's also a testament to the faith that we have in you to do extraordinary work, not just now, but well into the future. So welcome to the family, congratulations on earning tenure, and keep making us proud.
Okay, the next one will be A6, that's the approval of the appointment of Executive Director of Human Resources for Benefits, Civil Service, Residency, and Report, and that's Ayesha Morganstern. May I have a motion, please? Dr. Park, seconded by Ms. Koshyat, are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, congratulations. And we look forward to having you join Cyosset.
And I will just say, for everyone who is here for these happy events on the board agenda, if you want to stay for the rest of the evening, you're more than welcome to stay with us, but I always, I know that our teachers have to get up early in the morning, and so I'd like to provide you with an opportunity for a graceful exit. This is it. This is your only opportunity for a graceful exit.
All right, so now we are resuming the order of the meeting, and that is going to be Dr. Rogers, Superintendent's Report. Dr. Rogers.
Thank you very much. So as I mentioned last month, the superintendent's report from last month and this month is tied together, sort of a two-step process, Chapter One and Chapter Two. So in Chapter One, what we were doing was answering the question, has Cyosset's effort to improve its academic program borne fruit? And I think we were able to demonstrate that it has. The purpose of this month's conversation is to talk about the how, because every student is an individual, every student has... every student is an individual, every student has strengths and opportunities for growth. And so what we do is we try to meet students where they are, support them if needed, and get them to their fullest potential possible. So we do that by trying to individualize wherever possible. And we individualize especially when we see a student who might start to struggle a little bit. So we're very proud of what's called our MTSS program. And Ms. Goldthwait and Dr. Laverzo and Ms. Wojcik will spend more time talking about what that means in detail. But this was work that we embarked on over four years ago. And as would be no surprise, Siasit's model has become something that other districts follow. I was up in the Albany area for superintendent's conferences past weekend, and I had several colleagues come up to me and remark on how they had used our MTSS plan as a framework for their own work in their district. So I'm proud to get compliments like that, but I can't, I can't take those compliments for myself because it was the hard work of the team that's going to share with you shortly. So Ms. Goldthwait?
Thank you so much, Dr. Rogers and Board of Education, for this opportunity to review our systems of support that we have in place for students here. I'm excited not only to provide you an overview of our multi-tiered system of supports, but also to provide you a glimpse into our culture of care as we take a journey through a student referral with both myself, Dr. Raymond Laverzo, and Ms. Jeanette Wojcik. Dr. Laverzo is going to begin by providing us with some context of where this presentation sits in comparison with others that you have seen both last year and this past month.
Thank you. Our district is always striving to accomplish our mission of preparing students for a future that we've yet to imagine. And last year, we shared the innovative curriculum changes that we've made across multiple content areas, including the arts, physical education, technology, computer science, mathematics, and English language arts. We also discussed the strategic shifts we've made in our instruction. And during last month's meeting, we showcased student achievement data, which demonstrated the success of our innovative curriculum design and our instructional shifts. In order to complete our conversation on ways we amplify learning for all students, we wanted to highlight our targeted intervention and support services, which we call the multi-tiered systems of supports, or MTSS. Siasit's culture of care promotes a student-centered philosophy, where as a district, we work toward intentionally promoting kindness and offering a sense of belonging, which in turn establishes a safe, a safe space for students to pursue academic, social, and emotional success. To dive deeper into what MTSS is and how we use it, I'm going to turn over the presentation back to my colleague, Ms. Erin Goldthwait.
So what is MTSS? MTSS is a systematic framework that we use to provide targeted support to our struggling learners. Prior to COVID, the district began the initiative of refining our intervention support systems, which was previously referred to as RTI, or response to intervention, by moving away from targeting solely academic needs, but engaging in a more thoughtful, student-centered approach, and focusing on the needs of the whole child. We pioneered this movement forward and have become a lighthouse district for this work. The goal of our MTSS program is to provide intervention when a student demonstrates need for support. And with the use of our universal screener and the MTSS referral process, we aim to identify academic and social-emotional challenges. Once they're identified, areas of need are then remediated with strategic, research-based interventions, and progress is monitored then through our support and data-driven decision-making. As stated earlier, we're going to not only spend some time tonight reviewing the aspects of our MTSS plan, but an example about how we utilize this when a student demonstrates a need. Each of our 10 buildings implement the MTSS process. Within each of our buildings, our MTSS teams consist of multidisciplinary educators. This can include our building administrators, school psychologists, developmental learning specialists on the elementary level, social workers, special educators, guidance counselors, related service providers, or if appropriate, ENL teachers, in order to provide a multifaceted approach to exploring our students' needs. Our teams meet weekly for referrals, as well as during data meetings that take place at least three times a year. The universal visual of MTSS is a triangle or pyramid, as you see here. What I would like to highlight through this visual are two important factors of our MTSS process. First, it's a tiered system of support. What does that mean? It means there's different levels of intervention that exist. Tier one on the bottom focuses on universal support that's available for any identified student and takes place within the classroom setting itself. As students demonstrate a greater need for support, they will then move up the tiered system, where small group instruction is provided. Tier two typically occurs outside of the classroom for about 10% to 15% of our students. These interventions can include academic support, speech, occupational therapy, counseling, and social skills groups. These supports often take place during a student's MTSS or FLEX block at the elementary level, which is available no matter what day of the cycle we happen to fall, as well as elective periods at the secondary level. Tier three supports also take place outside of the classroom setting, but focus on students who continue to show evidence of struggle, even with the tier-two supports that have been intervened, and typically supports about 5% of our student population. As students move up to the tiers, considerations are made that may include targeting the intervention itself, the frequency and/or duration of the intervention, as well as the size of the groups. The second thing we want to make sure you focus on with this image is that MTSS focuses on a continuous monitoring of students. Students can move both up and down the tiers, depending on how they respond to the interventions that we provide. So in order to truly understand how MTSS unfolds in our school setting, we want to walk you through a journey of a student that may need this level of support. So please meet Arthur Reed. We selected this name as a nod to the literary protagonist in the book series, Arthur. Arthur, for our purposes, is a fourth-grade student who has many talents and strengths, which, as you can see, include things like playing sports, playing the saxophone, or hanging out with his friends. We explicitly chose grade four and Arthur's specific area of struggle that you'll see, because throughout a student's career, they are reading to learn. We see this skill take root in the fourth grade and continues on into the upper grade levels. While we're focusing on a fourth-grade student, we want to make sure you recognize that this can be, this process and this skill can be generalized to other grade levels as well. Now let's take a look at Arthur and what he looks like in the classroom setting. Arthur loves to read. He's able to decode with ease and read anything that's placed in front of him. He understands questions that may be asked of him that are easy to find or recall from the information he's able to read. However, when probed with questions that dig a little bit deeper, Arthur begins to show a struggle, as he's not able to necessarily infer or understand a character's motivation. So his teacher begins to notice that Arthur is a little bit quieter during this time, and is not necessarily participating during Reader's Workshop. This gets Arthur's teacher's thinking, as she shares both these strengths and concerns with his family. She begins to reflect on our entrance criteria for tier-one supports of our MTSS process. Our educators and MTSS team are aware of the entry level and exit level criteria as students move in and out of this process. Arthur's teacher refers to this criteria as she determines what should be the next steps for Arthur. Looking at our criteria here, Arthur's teacher will begin to not only reference her own observational impressions, but begin to look at what the data says about him. It is important to note that while we utilize this entry criteria as a framework, we also have the versatility to exercise professional judgment throughout this entire process. So how does data play a role in informing our instruction? Let's see what the data says about Arthur. To begin, we have a few data points that Arthur's teacher begins to utilize and analyze. I also want to acknowledge our color coding system that you're going to start to see, not only here, but throughout this presentation. Data or statements that are highlighted in green mean that the skills or those results are at grade level. Orange is an area of slight concern, and red demonstrates a more significant concern. We first will look at Arthur's NWEA data, which is our universal screener, from the Fall Administration. As you may recall from the earlier slide, any score below the 41st percentile is a data point of note for us. That's why, when we recognize the reading score as an area of concern that falls below the 41st percentile, as seen here in the 39th percentile, where math is not an area of concern for Arthur at this point, because he's falling at the 62nd percentile. Next, we look at students' reading levels. Looking at both where Arthur left off when he exited third grade at a Level P, and where he then enters fourth grade at a Level O, it's another data point we want to make sure we're paying attention to. It is not atypical for a student to demonstrate some kind of regression upon returning from summer, as seen with Arthur's slight slide down from a Level P to a Level O. We would be expecting him to enter at a Level P in the beginning of fourth grade. Lastly, we will take a peek at the New York State assessment scores for Arthur. He's falling, as you can see here, within the expected results. However, we want to make note that the cutoff of our scores between a Level 2 and a Level 3 is 450. Here, he's a little bit close, falling just into the Level 3 with a 451, something we'll pay attention to moving forward. Based upon the data presented and the teacher's report of the classroom performance, Arthur would be a student that would benefit from tier-one interventions. Tier-one interventions begin on an eight-to-10-week cycle. It is also important to note that the majority of research-based interventions actually require us to utilize them for at least an eight-week period of time in order for us to see if growth is happening. So the teacher begins to implement tier-one. The tier-one intervention focuses specifically on Arthur's area of need here, which we've identified as inferential reading comprehension weakness, as well as a weakness in understanding character analysis. During Reader's Workshop, Arthur's teacher delivers small group instruction to target this specific skill remediation. This is done in addition to the individual conferencing and whole group instruction that the entire class receives. The teacher also continues to take, keep track of the data and the assessments throughout this process to help inform her instruction. After the first intervention cycle, the teacher then reviews the data that she collects, and this time looks again at Arthur's reading level. We notice that his progress has stagnated a bit, which indicates further concern here with his overall reading comprehension, how he is now falling further behind our grade level expectations. You see that through the highlighted red. So what happens next? We have lots of things to consider whenever we're looking at a student through our MTSS process. Based on the specific data associated with Arthur, as well as the teacher's overall impressions, there are three options we would consider here. If progress was seen, we would remain at tier-one and continue that. And we would continue to monitor what that progress looks like. But since we have not seen an upward trajectory for Arthur, we need to start considering other things. So Arthur's teacher moves forward with a referral to the MTSS process. Ms. Wojcik is going to walk us through the next stages of the tiers of support for Arthur.
So as shared by Ms. Goldthwait, Arthur's teacher feels that a referral is the next best step. She reaches out to Arthur's family to share her concerns and begins the referral process. As the team meets, Arthur's teacher shares the data collected and the tier-one intervention that she has implemented within the classroom setting. As the team discusses Arthur and his profile, each member's unique perspective within their discipline allows for detailed discussions. For example, the speech therapist may ask about Arthur's ability to understand spoken language, as there sometimes can be a correlation with understanding written language. Based upon the data and the classroom teacher's report, the team decides that Arthur would benefit from tier-two intervention. When utilizing the MTSS process, the team refers to the entrance criteria set forth in Siasit's MTSS plan for tier-two intervention. These areas, highlighted here, are the areas where Arthur meets criteria for tier-two support. As a reminder, Arthur scored in the 39th percentile. His November running record is an O, which is below expectations, which are about a QR at this time of year. And based on his teacher's collection of data on classroom performance and tier-one support, we can see that Arthur is in need of more intense intervention. The MTSS team had determined that Arthur should receive tier-two intervention, and they decide that it would be appropriate that he receive support outside of the classroom. They decide that he will join the Learning Center three times a week for 40 minutes. Two additional decisions are made. Goals are developed according to areas of challenge identified by the data and the classroom teacher's report, and a program is determined to deliver targeted instruction. Since Arthur's area of concern is in reading comprehension, the team decides that leveled literacy intervention, or LLI, would be most appropriate to meet his comprehension needs. Once the MTSS team concludes their meeting, the teacher communicates with Arthur's family regarding the decisions made and sends a written notification home outlining the details of his intervention schedule. Intervention then takes place for eight to 10 weeks. As Ms. Goldthwait shared earlier, most research-based programs identify a recommended period of time of how long intervention should occur. So after eight to 10 weeks of tier-two intervention, we see that Arthur begins to make progress with his reading level, which has increased from a Level O to a Level P. However, despite the increase, expectations in January is a Level Q heading towards Level R, so he still falls below expected range. You may also notice that there are additional data points on this slide. When a student enters tier-two support, additional progress monitoring is conducted using AmesWeb Plus to more closely monitor specific areas of need. You can see by this AmesWeb Plus data that Arthur's area of challenge of reading comprehension is in fact highlighted in red at the 10th percentile. Additionally, his vocabulary score is borderline at the 22nd percentile. As the MTSS team meets to review Arthur's progress, there are several options to consider. Based on the data, we can really consider two options for Arthur. We can continue tier-two intervention, where we would move into another cycle of intervention for a determined set of time. Based upon Arthur's data points and interventionist and classroom teacher's report, we see that despite the growth in his reading level, Arthur is not making the rate of progress we would expect. Based on these factors, the team determines that Arthur should move to tier-three intervention. Tier-three intervention is meant for approximately 5% of students. This is the most intensive intervention level, where students receive more individualized support. Looking at the entrance criteria highlighted here, we see that Arthur meets criteria to move to tier-three support based on his winter NWEA score, his AmesWeb overall score, and his TC running record. Based on this entry criteria, we begin to establish tier-three interventions. We have several choices when moving to tier-three interventions. The first thing we usually choose to do is increase frequency of service. Arthur will now be receiving five days a week of intervention for 40 minutes each day. We are sure to share this update with his family and outline our tier-three plan and goals. When moving to tier-three, we can also look at the method of delivery of intervention. Sometimes, all a student may need is more time with the program that has been determined at tier-two. Other times, based on data collected by the interventionist, we may determine that a change in program would be necessary to appropriately target increasing areas of need. For example, if we notice that Arthur's challenge became more about vocabulary rather than inferential comprehension, we may make a change from, in his program, from LLI to visualizing and verbalizing. For the purposes of our presentation, Arthur will continue to receive LLI with increased frequency and will receive service in a smaller group of him and one other student. This intervention will continue for eight to 10 weeks. This intervention will continue for 8 to 10 weeks. After 8 to 10 weeks, the MTSS team meets again, and they take a look at the data to monitor Arthur's progress. We see success. Arthur's reading level has increased from a P to a Q, which is just shy of where he should be at this time of year. We also notice that his reading comprehension score is in the 22nd percentile, up from the 10th percentile. His vocabulary has increased from the 22nd percentile to the 31st percentile, and his overall score has increased from the 23rd percentile to the 32nd percentile. It is clear that we have found the correct intervention at the correct frequency to promote success for Arthur. This great news is shared with Arthur's family, and next steps are considered. Based on this data, there are several options to consider next. We can return to Tier 2 intervention, continue to stay the course with Tier 3 intervention, or should Arthur continue to make limited or no progress, we may decide to pursue a referral to special education. Based upon data and interventionist and classroom teacher report, another cycle of a Tier 3 intervention would be most appropriate to continue the upward trajectory of Arthur's success. After an additional cycle and continued progress, Arthur would most likely move back to Tier 2 intervention. So, as you can see, we've taken you through the successful MTSS journey of one student. However, while this example highlights an academic pathway, our MTSS team takes a whole child approach. For example, if Arthur's classroom teacher shares that he is beginning to demonstrate work avoidant behaviors due to the frustration he is experiencing, we may implement additional supports for him. This can be done in several ways, which include Tier 1 supports within the classroom setting that may focus on perseverance and/or understanding our areas of strength and challenges. Tier 2 supports may consist of small group support outside of the classroom, or Tier 3 support where intervention may be delivered individually. Next, Dr. Liverso will share insight into the varying supports available for our students no matter what need presents.
Students have a variety of needs, and we focus on the whole child during our MTSS process, addressing their academic, social, emotional, as well as their behavioral needs. We have a variety of tools, and we utilize them purposefully to accommodate the different needs of students. As Ms. Wojcik explained, our building teams take a data-centered approach to determine the most appropriate interventions for students. What you see here are a targeted list of interventions that can be implemented at each tier. It's important to note that this includes all levels of interventions across K-12. On our MTSS plan, you will see this broken down specifically by elementary, middle, and high school. That's posted on our website. For example, a program like Foundations is typically associated with elementary-level supports, whereas something like Castle Learning is a secondary support. We are constantly reviewing this list and these tools and piloting new programs to enhance and add to our list of interventions. We approach emotional wellness and behavioral supports in a similar fashion. We constantly evaluate our curriculum and make additions or modifications as needed. For example, this year, we added elements of the Olvea's Bullying Prevention Program to our curriculum. It's important to note that some behavioral needs arise from frustration with academic challenges, and this underscores the importance of our comprehensive approach and addressing the whole child. Now I'm going to bring back my colleague, Ms. Goldthwait, to discuss our team and some of the goals for the remainder of this school year.
So our emotional, social, and behavioral supports have strengthened this year exponentially with more comprehensive mental health teams in each of our buildings. We are thrilled that for the first time, we have a dedicated social worker in each of our buildings. This allows us not only to respond more efficiently in reactive ways to students' needs, but to actually be proactive now in providing greater opportunities for tiered supports. Here, you see our elementary mental health teams in each building, as well as our elementary district-level supports. And on this slide, you see our secondary teams, that not only consist of the individuals that are mentioned on screen here, but also our guidance counseling staff. These team members are critical to our students' success. Research suggests that students who are more well-adjusted, connected to their school environment, and have access to mental wellness supports yield positive outcomes for students, adults, and communities, which in turn leads to improved academic achievement. When students have supportive relationships and opportunities to develop and practice their social, cognitive, and emotional skills across different contexts, academic learning accelerates. These skills that are listed here on this slide proactively address students' mental well-being. Our buildings are in the process of working on a calendar now that addresses the core competencies of emotional growth and how we can systematically target them. I also want to say, after 2 years of determination and perseverance, we are excited to announce that we also have a new partnership with our Northwell Health Behavioral Health System. This support is not only going to help our students, it's also going to help our teachers and our families. We can look at this support as well through a tiered lens, just like we look at our MTSS supports. Through a Tier 1 approach, staff has access to professional development and consultations with trained counselors. This can include, and has included already for us, being able to provide support for students that may be struggling with school resistance, or focusing on building-level supports for students who have diagnoses of selective mutism. At a Tier 2 approach, Northwell can support with linkage to care. A significant challenge has been finding care that's not associated with a long waitlist for families. It has been challenging for families to be able to provide or find supports and therapies that they may need. Not only will a counselor begin to work with a student and a family through our Northwell Health Partnership, they will remain working with them until they are able to link them to a more formal and consistent care. Lastly, students who experience more significant needs or are in crisis situations can be directly referred to Northwell's Behavioral Clinic, which we utilize our Mineola Health Clinic. Students can be seen here at least within 24 hours of referral. It's important to note that our teams already went and visited the site, so we were able to experience what a family and child would experience if they're referred here. We also want to note the continued work that we've been focusing on when it comes to our MTSS process procedures and interventions. Last year, as evidenced on the slide here, we could see that we worked on building an MTSS module within our student management system that will promote both vertical and horizontal articulation within our buildings and our district. Information will be able to be more readily shared within the building itself, as well as during transitions between buildings. We also began the process of reworking our intervention library, which is available for our staff members, created streamlined notification systems, and developed quarterly progress reports to begin to lay the groundwork for positive behavioral interventions to be implemented within our schools. This current year, we will continue to enhance our MTSS procedures. We'll be revisiting and updating our entry and exit level criteria for MTSS services and enhancing our mental health and behavioral health supports, as listed on the slide. So as we come full circle, our MTSS process is a model program that embodies our mission to prepare students to thrive. We do this by supporting the entire whole child, utilizing data to inform our decisions, implementing high-quality interventions that are tailored to each student's need. Sciocet's MTSS system exhibits a culture of care by engaging in a proactive, whole-child approach to support all aspects of students' academic, social, and behavioral learning and development. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for the comprehensive presentation. Are there any questions from the board? Ms. Eberson, please.
Yeah, just to echo, thank you so much. That was great. I think it's very important to look at the whole child in all these aspects, and my questions happen to go into the social, emotional, behavioral supports, because I feel like the academics have metrics more, and the social, emotional aspects and behavioral aspects may not be as apparent or easy to, you know, put into a smaller box or metric. So I just wanted to know how the process for identifying them, sometimes it's harder or easier, and I also wanted to talk about, or if you could talk a little bit about restorative practices. I think they're super, super important to getting kids back and acclimated and helping them, especially after situations and things that arise. So if you could talk about that a little bit.
So those restorative practices are embedded all throughout with our MTSS process, as well as just typical experiences that students have and teachers implement through different types of situations, whether it be Tier 1 type of having a classroom circle, or even doing more restorative work if there's challenges that students are experiencing with one another or within a building itself. You're right, it is a little bit more difficult to say that there's, you know, specific numbers and criteria for data for entry and exit in and out, which is why we really utilize our mental health teams to be able to work directly with our teachers to identify, you know, clearly if there's a specific area of concern that's more significant in nature, we have our MTSS or our mental health teams to directly work with students that might be exhibiting those concerns. But if it is a lower-level concern, it might be a conversation with our mental health team first to determine, is it appropriate, or is this what I should be developmentally expecting a student to do at this level in my classroom? So some of that will come from conversations, and then we do keep track of referrals. So how many students are being seen by our mental health providers? Are they being seen in small groups or individually? Are they moving in and out of those systems? And what are some referrals, but not only necessarily to special education, but disciplinary referrals? All of those things are consistently being looked at to see, are the types of supports that we have in place making a difference in what we're expecting our students to not only do academically, but how they are engaging socially and emotionally with their peers and with others?
Ms. Falco, please.
Hi. I think the MTSS program is fantastic, and I think you do such a good job. The social, emotional health of all the kids, wherever they fall, is so important, and my experience looking at kids, I have kids of all different ages and have been through, I have one that graduated, one that's still in middle school, kids in between. The social, emotional health of kids who aren't necessarily identified or wouldn't necessarily pop up on your radar, to me, is also an issue that needs to be addressed. I feel that, from what I have observed, many of the kids are under immense amount of stress and facing a lot of anxiety, and wouldn't necessarily pop up on the school's radar because they wouldn't be identified as kids who are struggling in any way, but there's a general cloud of anxiety and stress for many of the kids at varying academic levels. What are things that we can do, or we do do, to help the kids at all those different levels who may not identify, so that they don't get to take part in these services, but still really, you know, can use help?
So I think that's a great point, because it's not as obvious, right, when it comes to social, emotional needs. Step 1 would be, if as a parent, you're seeing your child experiencing that, definitely making sure you're having conversations with the school itself, because the communication is also key in us sometimes identifying things that may not be obvious to us in a classroom setting. I think what we also want to be thoughtful about is that we do have a lot of proactive ways that we're trying to target or teach skills to kids. So implementation of something like the Harmony Curriculum at the elementary level with the increased social workers. We have some social, emotional blocks that are built into some of the elementary schedules where they could push in and do lessons that focus on, you know, overcoming adversity or, you know, working through conflicts with our peers. In the middle school, you'll see that in the advisory, where some of the advisory lessons are focusing on those topics, and then health lessons, and some specific clubs, actually, that are associated with making sure we could de-stigmatize the idea of how to, or feeling more comfortable to receive mental health support, because I think that's another piece that we are always tackling. You know, anxiety is something that is widespread right now. Even, I mentioned selective mutism before, that's an offset of anxiety that we're starting to see in younger students, and more, you're seeing that diagnosed a little bit more than we may have in the past. So I think that making sure we are being proactive and utilizing the mental health teams we have is step 1, to be able to teach students the skills they need to overcome those experiences that they may feel when they're kind of going through an anxious moment or an opportunity when they may be overwhelmed, even in the sense of their executive skills. And then, when needed, conversations with families if something's not necessarily obvious to any of our members or our classroom teachers in those moments in time.
Thank you. Just from being in the schools and seeing it, I know it's such a hard thing to quantify, do you feel that the stress and anxiety level of the kids on the whole has been greatly on the rise, or stable leveling off, maybe coming down? Like, have you seen any success in the, you know, general population of whatever academic level, but overall?
So not just in Sciocet, but I think everywhere, we're hearing about this, right? You know, mental health needs are on the rise. I think what we are seeing here is more students feeling comfortable to access those supports because of some of the connections and the relationships that we're having. We also have wellness spaces that we created in the middle school to be able to try and make this be more comfortable for students. We are seeing more students require mental health support, and I think that's why it's important that we bring in our partnership with Northwell Health to help families with the linkage that's extremely challenging right now. The linkage is a problem, because we have more and more students, not just in Sciocet, but across the island, experiencing these needs. So what we want to do is try and make sure we're being proactive, teaching skills, and helping students come up with those ways to cope with what they're struggling with, but at the same time, as needed, providing those in-school and supporting families to seek out-of-school supports.
Last one, I promise.
That's okay.
So it's wonderful to have the services when the children are having issues, but ideally, I think, prevention so that they don't get to the point of needing the services would be more ideal. So if there's any kind of programs or ideas or thoughts on how to get the kids to not, you know, be in the position where they need, it's great to have the services available to them, and the partnership with Northwell Health is amazing, and such a blessing to have it, but ideally, to have the kids not be to that point would be, in my mind at least, more ideal, if there's any programs or things that go to that.
I definitely agree, and I think that's what those Tier 1 supports are doing, and that's why, you know, when we looked at our elementary schedule this year, we do have that SEL time, and that's key, right? So we have social workers to be able to deliver those proactive strategies. Now we have them identifying what those concerns look like, and how can we be proactive by pushing into classroom and providing those skills to all. So that is, that will continue to be an area we focus on and become a little bit more robust in the ways that we're able to address that for all of our students.
Erin, and Jeanette, and Ray, thank you for doing the walkthrough. I think that's really helpful, and I know, I know we go off of the data, and obviously you guys have been doing this for a long time, so forgive me if I ask you a question that, obviously, you're not going to cover everything in here, but what happens when you have students that come in, they're having trouble with the language, or they have other physical disabilities that, so at what point do we start evaluating those, and where is that in this process?
So it really can depend, and that really will depend on each individual child. When it comes to being able to look to see if special education needs are required, you know, we will start with this process. I think it's important to note that a referral to special education starts a timeline. That timeline is 60 days to evaluate, review, report, come to CSC, and make decisions. So while that always is a process we're looking at, what we also want to do is make sure that we're intervening right away for kids. So there might be times that we're going through an MTSS process and starting to consider, is there more to this? Are we starting to see greater need or more significant areas of deficit that would need greater remediation than what our MTSS supports currently provide? We also look at this through a cultural lens and making sure that we are understanding, is it an area of weakness or deficit, or is there a language barrier here? And that's why the importance of the ENL teacher, when appropriate, to be a part of our multi-disciplinary team is there to help us provide that insight and make sure that we're aware of what are different types of supports we may embed in the classroom to help a student who may have more language-based needs versus language-based weaknesses or deficits.
And then, I, my other question was, then obviously there's a stigma amongst the teachers, there's a stigma also from the other students. And then, what about building that student's confidence up going forward? Because like, if you have to leave class and the kids say, oh, where are you going? And you say, well, I gotta go, then everybody's like, they're gonna speak. So how do you then not kind of have that, I guess, tracking or kind of identifying that student that, then it's kind of a self-fulfilling prophecy?
I think one thing we have to pay attention to is that schools, especially, particularly, I would say, elementary, right, for that model?
Yeah.
They look a little different than what we remember. Because the types of supports and the ease in which we provide those supports happen more consistently for many different reasons. Whether it be for MTSS, whether it be for enrichment, whether it be for other things, students are coming in and out of rooms all the times. So I think sometimes we may feel that a little bit more as adults than maybe our students are even recognizing that in the classroom. But I think it also is something that we really focus on in the classroom itself, so teachers are able to provide those lessons and those proactive supports to students. And we all may need different things at different times. And starting those conversations earlier and then helping students build that capacity over time is really where that proactive lens comes into play. Because what we want students to feel is comfortable to advocate for their needs and comfortable with that idea of self-determination, which is identifying, who am I as a learner? Who am I as an individual? What do I do really well, and what may I struggle with? You know, our weaknesses don't define who we are, and we need to make sure we're trying to help students understand that. So it's done through a process, and it may look different for each child, but what we're trying to do is de-stigmatize the entire idea of receiving support. Because that looks so different in different ways, and we're starting to see it more accessible for students throughout the school day and beyond, to be honest.
Right. And the reason I also bring up physical is, you know, there's hearing, also then with boys, you have a lot of fidgeting, they can't sit, and then all of a sudden, everybody gets put in the behavioral problem. Their behavior, you know, that's disrupting the class. So trying to, I know these things have been around for a long time, and hopefully like, we can move forwards, especially the difference between boys and girls in elementary school.
I agree, and I think it's something that we're constantly looking at. One of the things that we do have is we are connected to mental health consortiums. You speak to behavior and attention. You know, there's a roundtable that they have for our general education teachers about how do you work with students with ADHD in your classroom? And a lot of our teachers may seek out access to that support. So there's a lot of different ways that our teachers are learning strategies to be able to make sure that they're creating the best environment for the kids that they're interacting with on a regular basis, as well as utilizing the different types of professionals within the buildings that have areas of expertise in those areas, and then providing guidance for them as well. So that we can create comfortable environments where students feel happy and safe for them to be able to then learn.
Thank you.
Mr. Greco, please.
Thank you again. That was very comprehensive. I thought I heard, and I don't know who may have said it, or maybe I just misheard, that Tier Three is meant for approximately 5%. Is that what you're seeing, or is that some kind of benchmark?
It's typical. And I think it depends. Different cohorts, we may see different things. We are seeing less students receive Tier Three than maybe we had in the past, because I do think that one of the benefits of us having the system in play for as long as we have is that we've really been able to fine-tune some of those interventions, particularly at the lower levels. So we have been able to catch students a little bit quicker and be able to provide those interventions that they require so that we can maybe help with that progress versus necessarily moving so quickly up the ladder. So I think it can depend. Our referral rates, looking back, honestly have changed over time. And they change within each building when I collect data, too. So it's so hard to pinpoint and say one specific thing is exactly working, because sometimes it really is about a cohort or a group. But for the most part, we are intervening earlier and then seeing less need going up, and even meaning that that impacts what our referrals to special education look like.
Dr. Park?
Thank you for the presentation. Going along with Tom's question, so a lot of our students go from kindergarten to 12th grade. And from the example, we see that he was able to be alerted because we had the data from June. And then September, his grade lowered, so he was able to be picked up right away and then was put on Tier One, Tier Two, Tier Three. So this is a successful story. For those people who are joining us in the mid-year or later, between the buildings or third grade, fourth grade, how long does it take for that student to be fully evaluated and put in the system?
It happens pretty quick. One of the first things we'll do is the teachers will start kind of working with them and doing a reading level or running record is probably one of the first things that we would start doing. If it's close to the time period in which NWA was given, we may be able to find an alternative date to give that data, or we may wait for the next administration. NWA is given three times a year, so fall, winter, and spring. However, that's not our only data point. You know, there, we might be giving them some classroom lessons or classroom tests to see how they're able to do. We receive feedback from where they transfer and get some transcripts about what did that look like for them before they came to us, and what were some of those areas that they may have been struggling with. So we very quickly start to get our eyes on students and very quickly start to determine, are there additional things that we may need to be implementing here in a quick fashion? And maybe that might accelerate a referral to MTSS if we're seeing that with a, in a transfer student coming in.
On the MTSS schools for 2022 to 2023 slide, the first sentence is build the MTSS module within our student data system? Yeah. The second one, intervention library to support access to intervention for all staff. Is that something that parents can also access and utilize at home?
So a lot of times what will happen is we might share with parents different strategies that they have access to on their own. Some of the things that we have in the intervention in the library are things we subscribe to as a district. So it, some of the things that are going to be on there and have been, we had an MTSS intervention site. What was happening is we weren't necessarily keeping up with that site, which is why we're building a new one, to be able to have easier ease to interventions and more thorough interventions across all levels and all areas. Some of those things can be shared with parents through the conversations about what is the plan, what is the program, and what does this look like? And sometimes teachers just have different ways of being able to say, oh, this is a really good tool and strategy. You might want to start working with your child with this at home. So a lot of those just come from the conversation. But when there are things that can be made available for parents to utilize at home, we will share that information as well.
One more thing I'm, the pyramid with the Northwell on the top, it says ED. What's that?
So that's when you're going to an emergency site.
Thank you.
All right, so I have a quick question. So I do see that we, the Cyosset has different rubrics and criteria for the entrance to the MTSS systems. And then I'm put, I'm sure that the, the district's also monitoring these kids who haven't met the criteria borderline. And at what point do we admit these students, meaning even if they're still below the criteria, and if we have less students, do we take them right away to preserve that time to, you know, get the intervention?
Can you just change, rephrase that, just because I'm not sure exactly where, what question you're asking?
For example, I'm looking at the entrance criteria for Tier Two support. And is, the first line says NWE MAP scores 21st to 40th percentile. If someone is scoring, you know, borderline, do we take them? When do we take them?
Absolutely. So that's where we talked before about, like, we'd use teacher discretion as well, professional discourse, and observations that teachers are making. These are, and that's why we said when we use this, it's a framework. It's a foundation that we can build upon and utilize, but not necessarily specific. So if we have someone who's at the 41st percentile and also exhibiting other areas of concern, that would absolutely be someone that we would potentially refer to MTSS or move up and down a tier a little bit differently. So they're used as, it's a guidance and a way for us to be able to have some kind of way to look and see what should we be expecting kids to do, and when should we start to be concerned? But it is not set in stone that if a student's at the 41st percentile, we're gonna wait till they get down into the 40th.
All right. Are we all good? Oh, Ms. Astrick, I'm sorry.
Thank you, all of you. I know you've been thanking for the presentations, but the order of complexity that you're trying to summarize in, in this, and the number of things, the choices that you had to make, and the things that you couldn't go into further detail. I know there's five more presentations in here, so thanks for summarizing in a way that I think it's comprehensible and understandable and that we can follow. I have sort of two or three different sets of questions. I'm not gonna keep you here all night. So the first one is sort of about process and resources. How much of the processes that are being described for MTSS team meetings, data analyses, weekly meetings, is that prescriptive from central district, or do each of the schools manage those processes themselves?
There's expectations that we have for schools, but then the schools are the ones that create them. So the idea that we have data meetings is an expectation, that we're gonna look at our data, we're gonna meet and talk about that. We may not need to meet weekly, so a school may depend upon that. Do they have referrals that are coming in? Do they not? So that may differ over time. So it allows for some flexibility within the process within each school based off of how the students are presenting. Sometimes there may not be any referrals, but the MTSS team may come together to talk about a new intervention that they may be trying. So they may have a little bit of flexibility within the meeting time as well to make sure we're targeting different types of needs, and some of that might be professional growth.
And just to further clarify and understand, it, from the standpoint of relative timing of sort of the first set of data screens and the, and all of those, are those also generally, not prescriptively, but designed to be done at roughly the same time across all the buildings?
Correct. We do have assessment calendars that we utilize with some flexibility within, but we do have timeframes that we expect everyone to be able to provide some of these screeners and assessments.
Okay. And then, from a resource standpoint, each of the buildings is going to have a significantly different number of children, even within the elementary context. How does the resource allocation vary in terms of personnel that are assigned, so a school with 300 kids versus 600 kids, et cetera? In other words, one principle, that's, that's a significant workload difference?
So what we are doing is kind of collecting data on a regular basis to see what are the types of supports that students are seeking and needing and requiring within each building, and then utilizing that when it comes to what our needs are in that building. One of the first things I did last year when I came here was be able to start collecting that data to make sure, because while we do have differences in number of sizes in buildings, sometimes that doesn't necessarily mean that the number of supports that are required in each of those buildings look different. Because it really is dependent upon how are the students presenting? What are the needs that they're presenting with? And then that triggers for us what, how many individuals or providers might need to be in that building itself. So that, it's not necessarily by your size of your building, it's really more about the presentation of the students.
That makes sense to me. And I just had two other sort of, I guess, different categories of questions. So I, I know we touched on academic versus social, emotional versus behavioral referrals. Can you give us a sense, and I, I know the Venn diagrams overlap, right? Some social, emotional needs interact with academic needs. But can you give us a sense of, are the vast majority, or what's the distribution of MTSS interventions by sort of first category, I guess?
I think academic starts with the majority of our initial recommendations. I think what we're starting to see is a greater referral rate when it comes to social, emotional, and behavioral needs. So I do think that we're starting to see that shift a little bit. I think some of it has to do with having more access to the supports that we could provide for students. And students are demonstrating, particularly at the younger grades, a little bit more of an intensive need for behavioral supports. So those are things that we're starting to see a little bit more on the uptick than the past, which has been, I would say, largely more focused on the academic lens.
And then, sorry, I don't want to occupy everyone's time. I just had two more quick things. So one of the things that I noticed was notably absent from the presentation, and maybe this goes more to Dr. LaVerseau, or Ms. LaVerseau. What about folks on the upper distribution of the MTSS intervention curve? In other words, those folks who don't necessarily need academic support for falling below grade, but rather those that are tracking above grade or above two grades, particularly among the younger students? Is there a set of prescriptions for those students so that, so that not only are folks who are struggling with academic sometimes can lead to behavior problems, but what about those who are tracking far ahead on the top, top part of the curve and the potential for them to end up in behavioral referrals?
That's a very important question. As a classroom teacher, I certainly experienced that. And I, there are many levels to this, and in other states, we've talked about this. There, there's a process in place for conceptualizing gifted education in a similar way than what we just described here. But in terms of meeting the needs of the students that are above grade level or who need additional challenges, we have school-wide enrichment that we utilize with project-based learning, and we also have our project, we also have our Project Beyond program as well. So obviously, the same way a student could have behavioral issues that stem from academic challenges, it could also, it could also have behavioral issues that arise because they're not being challenged adequately. And we would, that would be a part of the whole child approach. Is this an issue where, you know, the work avoidance, for example, is coming from the fact that they don't want to do it because they're not challenged enough by it? They think, they, they're just not engaged with it? Or is the work avoidance coming from a place of not being able to do it? So those are all things that classroom teachers would look at with the help of our mental support staff, mental health support staff to decide and determine what the best course of action would be.
Right. And I think I heard you say that we have enrichment options, but currently we haven't developed or considered or thought through the possibility of acceleration options at the district level.
Well, we have acceleration options in our, in our middle school and as, as well as the high school. So students do have the option to accelerate. And by the time we get to eighth grade and ninth grade, we're not even, we're talking about an accelerated program, but it's also advanced. So you have kids taking courses that may be a year ahead of where they would normally take them, and you're also going into greater depth. So you have an accelerated program and a much more in-depth program.
And my last question, I promise, which is, now that we've had sort of two presentations over the last two meetings, if you could synthesize for us, because I'm always thinking in terms of strategic level priorities, goals, objectives for the district, places that we ought to be focused on directing additional resources or, or ideas, can you sort of, and I know this a little bit on the spot, but can you think through, between last week and this week, the areas that you think we ought to be taking our eye of Sauron on and focusing for the idea of generating some goals over the next three to five years that we should be, areas we should be shooting at?
Could I say everything? I, there are definitely some near-term goals that we're looking at in terms of our math program, social studies curriculum, and just capitalizing on the progress that we've made over the last six or seven years with our K5 curriculum. And looking at opportunities to build in more project-based learning for students. I think social studies is a good opportunity to do that. It's, we used to say, Dr. Rogers said this quite a bit, we want to break down the silos. So, you know, not looking at social studies as social studies, but how it connects with the other content areas. And in math, science, ELA as well. And I think it goes back to, you know, when we think back to Arthur Reed, you know, the idea of reading to learn. Once we've had that foundation in place, you know, there's a lot of doors that open for students, and, you know, what they read and write about is a lot more important at that point. So having opportunities, I, I think having opportunities for students to experience more real, real-world scenarios and, and project-based learning, I think that's the most I think that's the most important focus. And I think that that's an important focus K-12. And I hope to be presenting you with some other, I don't want to get too far ahead of myself, but I, I do hope that we will present other examples of what I'm talking about with more real-world based scenarios in, in our K-12 curriculum.
And Ms. Goldthwaite, did you have any, anything to add?
Did you see me trying to jump out of my chair? I think you guys have hit it the past two presentations. Mental health has come up consistently. So to me, I think that we have, and we're grateful for the mental health supports that we have been able to implement within our schools. And I do think there might be some more specified areas as well as spaces and opportunities to de-stigmatize the need for mental health supports would be areas that we'd want to continue to focus on.
All right. Thank you so much again for the presentation. Oh, Mr. Rotolo?
Thank you. So I wanted to follow up on Jack's point. Especially students that were gifted or, so I know that we're providing more accelerated classes in middle school as you go up. But my own observations over the years were students that, let's say, were in elementary school. Then what ended up happening was if they didn't feel challenged, then they ended up leaving the district was one. And then kind of they got bullied a lot. Wasn't, you know, they were just getting bullied because they were, they were just advanced. So it seemed like, you know, it seemed like they were kind of in a bad spot. And, and multiple students I saw leave the district.
So I do think that's someplace that we are starting to put some more energy into and, and exploring. I do also think that, you know, I think when we talk, to talk about the word bullying, I think there's a lot that can be kind of unpacked there. So I'm not gonna go too deep into it. But I do think that what we want to do is make sure that we're providing opportunities for students to understand what it means to be accepting of themselves and others, how we treat ourself and others around us. And then looking for more opportunities for differentiation. Because that can happen at any point in time within any classroom, both upwards introductories of enrichment or challenging material as well as differentiating down for students who may be struggling.
Sorry, just because bullying was brought up and it is an issue. Whether the word has to be unpacked or not, it is a definite issue. And the restorative practices for it within our schools have to be really looked at. There are definitely things that are going on that have to do with academics and social behavior. There are things that have to go, that go on that are not, that have nothing to do with those things. And the, the practices to get the kids back and acclimated and to deal with, with the, the mental and social emotional load of dealing with that should be a priority to be looked at as well.
And I think, hopefully you saw that in the sense that we've implemented some new programs this year. And part of that has already begun with the training of individuals within our buildings to be able to support students, identifying it when need be, understanding what it means.